Good evening. I'd like to call the Mentor City Council Regular Meeting of December 6, 2022, to order. Invocation will be given by Councilman Krieger.
Heavenly Father, we thank thee for this day. Help us to use good judgment for the business at hand and guide us in wisdom with a continuing sense of truth and fairness for the community we represent.
.......................................
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Krieger.
Here.
Mr. Marn.
Here.
Mr. Blake.
Here.
Mr. Donovan.
Here.
Mrs. Dowling.
Here.
Mr. Freeman.
Here.
Mr. Kirchner.
Here.
Council, you're in receipt of the November 15, 2022 Work Session.
Move to approve.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Krieger.
Yes.
Mr. Marn.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Donovan.
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling.
Yes.
Mr. Freeman.
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner.
Yes. You're also in receipt of the November 15, 2022 Regular Meeting.
Move to approve the minutes.
Second.
A regular meeting, excuse me.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Krieger.
Yes.
Mr. Marn.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Donovan.
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling.
Yes.
Mr. Freeman.
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner.
Yes.
You're also in receipt of the November 15, 2022 Regular Meeting.
Move to approve the minutes.
Second.
A regular meeting, excuse me.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Krieger.
Yes.
Mr. Marn.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Donovan.
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling.
Yes.
Mr. Freeman.
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner.
Yes. Move to approve.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Krieger.
Yes.
Mr. Marn.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Donovan.
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling.
Yes.
Mr. Freeman.
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner.
Yes. Move to approve.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Krieger.
Yes.
Mr. Marn.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Donovan.
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling.
Yes.
Mr. Freeman.
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner.
Yes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Krieger.
Yes.
Mr. Marn.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Donovan.
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling.
Yes.
Mr. Freeman.
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner.
Yes.
Ordinance number 22-0-101 is approved.
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
Congratulations, administration, for a great budget and great job.
Yep.
Got a lot accomplished, and as you just mentioned before the meeting, it's amazing where we came from. As us old timers could attest, crazy. Really is.
Not all of us.
Oh, sorry. But thank you. We can thank our business community as well for putting us in a position to do so. Truly is amazing.
Mr. Filipek, thank you very much. Ordinance number 22-0-101.
An ordinance to authorize transfers of funds, advances of funds, and revisions to appropriations and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Filipek.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Malinowski, please.
Thank you, Mr. Filipek. Members of council, this ordinance is the annual house cleaning type of legislation. It allows us to close out several of the multiple funds that we have. Section 1 includes a rather large, about $12.9 million permanent cash transfer out of the city's general fund to various funds, as noted in the ordinance here. Largest item being the rec center entire payoff of that roughly $5.2 million plus the $1 million that council authorized to do improvements on that facility. The next largest amount that stands out would be the funding of the self-insured medical fund at two full quarters. Then there are two other permanent cash transfers coming out of two different funds, the Emergency Regional Response Facility Fund and the Headlands Street Rehab Fund. Those are to close out those funds, and the money goes back into our bond retirement fund to pay off debt. Section 2 includes roughly a $1.2 million temporary cash advance, also out of the city's general fund. These monies will be returned upon mostly grants, almost entirely grant-related activity there. And then Section 3 has all the appropriate necessary revisions to our appropriations to allow us to do these rather large advances and transfers. I would recommend approval. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Malinowski. Council?
Move to suspend.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Krieger.
Yes.
Mr. Marn.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Donovan.
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling.
Yes.
Mr. Freeman.
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner.
Yes.
Ordinance number 22-0-101 is approved. Ordinance number 22-0-102.
An ordinance amending ordinance number 22-0-087, approving the vacation of a portion of Headlands Road upon permanent parcel numbers 16D, 111B, 00013, 014, 015, 016, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Zeeman.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Members of council, this is a proposed amendment that was prompted by request from the property owners. Council will be aware, previously that portion of Headlands Road was approved for vacation by council, conditioned on consolidation of those parcels under common ownership in a way that there wouldn't be any island parcels and that they would all have frontage on Lake Overlook specifically. The property owner had requested an alternate consolidation, which is what is now attached to your, this amending ordinance. And obviously, prior to the meeting tonight, you were distributed a copy of what had previously been approved. He just basically wants to add some additional lot that they own, which already borders on Lake Overlook, add that to create a parcel with a bit of a Z shape to it so that it has some access to Lake Erie. They did agree because that parcel's already been constructed, and the other parcel has not been constructed to a further condition that they would not try to build any type of principal structure on that more narrow portion of the lot if council approves that, where it narrows to 50 feet. So the structure would be closer to Lake Overlook and setback more appropriately.
Thank you, Mr. Zeeman.
Thank you.
Council, I just want you to, in your packet, if you look at the picture in your packet of the property, it's, this is the one Mr. Zeeman gave us before the meeting. We approved that, and this is the change in your packet. It's more Z-shaped if you have your packet with you. They added, they added a piece, they added, I don't know what.
Western?
Yeah.
Western piece?
Yes, they added that western piece, yeah. That's it.
Correct. And, Mr. President, members of council, that's the piece that already has the house constructed on it.
Mr. Marn?
I guess I'm confused. So they added the piece that the house is already constructed?
Correct. There's a house that the property owner owns, but the consolidation that council had already approved would not have afforded that parcel any Lake Erie access. So by reconfiguring it in this way, they would consolidate that parcel, which already has a house constructed on it, with some additional lands, giving it access to Lake Erie, put a, so you could put some type of improvements on that, not a principal structure, of course, something where beach access would be.
I got it right here.
Oh, you got it.
Okay, so I guess what you're saying is, so gives us access, so if you're at this property and you're looking north, then you cross over Headlands Road, and then that's, that's the portion, that's the view you're talking about?
Well, Headlands Road will, well, obviously, Headlands Road is, you know, going to be vacated, so that, and there's no pavement there.
Right.
As council knows, so.
So they just added that on so that that way it's clear to the north?
It has lake access, I think, is what they're looking for, to create a parcel that's a little oddly shaped, but the homeowners would then have land that goes to the water's edge.
Okay.
Mr. President.
Mr. Blake.
So my understanding is, is this adds an extra section of Headlands Road to this vacation?
No, sir, it doesn't. The area of vacation is unaffected by this proposal.
Okay.
Correct.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Now, Kirchner, we are creating a flag lot.
Motion to suspend.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
I need a second.
Oh, we need a second.
Mr. Krieger.
Yes.
Mr. Marn.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Donovan.
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling.
Yes.
Mr. Freeman.
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner.
Yes. Move to approve.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Krieger.
Yes.
Mr. Marn.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Donovan.
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling.
Yes.
Mr. Freeman.
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner.
Yes.
Ordinance number 22-0-102 is approved. Ordinance number 22-0-103. Mr. Filipek?
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
An ordinance declaring the improvement to certain real property within the city of Mentor to be a public purpose and exemption, exempt from real property taxes, identifying certain public infrastructure improvements that will directly benefit the parcels, requiring the owner to make service payments in lieu of taxes, establishing a public improvement tax increment equivalent fund, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Filipek.
Thank you, Mr. President. These next several ordinances are properties on which the city intends to utilize tax increment financing for public improvements and public maintenance of those improvements. Mr. Malicek, please.
Thank you, Mr. Filipek, and I want to thank our law director, Mr. Zeeman, and our assistant city manager, Mr. Fowler. Some serious work was definitely put together in these eight ordinances that are coming up to ensure that we're going to continue to be able to make public infrastructure improvements with the dollars that would come from these various properties. Ordinance number, ordinance 103 is referring to the Omni Development. That's the senior living development that's currently under, nearly completed, just south of Interstate 90.
Thank you, Mr. Malicek. Council?
Move to suspend.
Second. Go ahead, I'll do it next time.
Julie, call the roll, please.
Mr. Krieger.
Yes.
Mr. Marn.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Donovan.
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling.
Yes.
Mr. Freeman.
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner.
Yes.
Ordinance number 22-0-103 is approved. Our next ordinance is number 22-0-104.
An ordinance declaring the improvement of certain real property located in the city of Mentor to be a public purpose, declaring a portion of such property to be exempt from real property taxation, compensating the school district for revenue not realized, designating the public infrastructure improvements that will benefit such property, requiring annual service payments in lieu of taxes, establishing a municipal public improvement tax increment equivalent fund, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Filipek?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Malicek, please.
Ordinance 104 relates to the Trader Joe's development.
Kevin, that's it?
Okay. Thank you.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Krieger.
Yes.
Mr. Marn.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Donovan.
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling.
Yes.
Mr. Freeman.
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner.
Yes. Move to approve.
Second, and a long time coming.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Krieger.
Yes.
Mr. Marn.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Donovan.
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling.
Yes.
Mr. Freeman.
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner.
Yes.
Ordinance number 22-0-104 is approved. Ordinance number 22-0-105.
An ordinance declaring the improvement of certain real property located in the city market redevelopment area in the city of Mentor to be a public purpose, declaring a portion of such property to be exempt from real property taxation, compensating the school district for revenue not realized, designating the public infrastructure improvements that will benefit such property, requiring annual service payments in lieu of taxes, establishing a municipal public improvement tax increment equivalent fund, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Filipek.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Malicek, please.
Thank you, Mr. Filipek. Ordinance 105, as it says, the city market, but in particular, the Raising Canes development that was established this year.
Thank you, sir. Council?
Move to suspend.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Krieger.
Yes.
Mr. Marn.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Donovan.
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling.
Yes.
Mr. Freeman.
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner.
Yes.
Ordinance number 22-0-105 is approved. Ordinance number 22-106.
An ordinance declaring the improvement of certain real property located in the Mentor Avenue East Commercial Corridor in the city of Mentor to be a public purpose, declaring a portion of such property to be exempt from real property taxation, compensating the school district for revenue not realized, designating the public infrastructure improvements that will benefit such property, requiring annual service payments in lieu of taxes, establishing a municipal public improvement tax increment equivalent fund, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Filipek?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Malicek, please.
Thank you, Mr. Filipek. This primarily has to do with the Target redevelopment. There was a significant reinvestment by the Target Corporation in their east side of Mentor Mentor Avenue store, and that's what this relates to.
Thank you, sir. Council?
Move to suspend.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Krieger.
Yes.
Mr. Marn.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Donovan.
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling.
Yes.
Mr. Freeman.
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner.
Yes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Krieger.
Yes.
Mr. Marn.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Donovan.
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling.
Yes.
Mr. Freeman.
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner.
Yes.
Ordinance number 22-0-106 is approved. Mr. President. Mr. Marn.
Now's probably a better time for my question. Question for the law director. Mr. Zeeman, on each of these previous ones, they're all separate, and they all have developing agreements. Now, on this ordinance, there's six? One, two, three, five. Five.
Correct.
Okay, how come we ease our group together?
You'll note, the, actually, the only, the Trader Joe's project and the Omni were pursuant to development agreements, and so those obviously stand alone because those were in furtherance of those development agreements where we had specific identified public infrastructure improvements. The Raising Canes was actually not included in the original City Market TIF ordinance because it's land on, it sits on land that was not included in that original ordinance. But when analyzing the public infrastructure improvements that directly impact some of these parcels, obviously, as you go around the city, you get public infrastructure improvements which are fairly different from others that are directly impacting other projects in the city. As the council's aware, there was significant investment into the widening of 615 and the signalization of that new intersection, which leads into the, I'll call it the Giant Eagle, city market development. So Raising Canes obviously is a component of that redevelopment area, and so called out under the specific public infrastructure improvements is that signalization and those improvements to Tyler Boulevard. So that's where those, that's where those TIF monies are going to go in service of those public infrastructure improvements. As we go around the city, obviously, the Raising Canes development doesn't have a whole lot to do with what's going on Diamond Center, and so you'll see, but as the council's aware, there's a project on the books for widening of Diamond Center and other related improvements on that stretch of Heasley. So you'll see some, some development projects in that vicinity, all of which are going to be directly, you know, affected by those, by those public infrastructure improvements. Likewise, as you move around the city, there's a project specifically highlighted, and I'll allow the administration to comment more specifically, for the Tyler Boulevard corridor in terms of lighting infrastructure and other things of that nature. Likewise, with Reynolds Road and some of those future improvements. So we sort of took a look at where there wasn't a specific development agreement, where public infrastructure was solely in support of that development agreement, but absolutely, when we go around town, you can see areas where the amount of development which has occurred is directly mandating and directly affecting the public infrastructure improvements that are required. So that's why they're sort of grouped by area, because the infrastructure improvements are discrete.
Because it's not exactly specific.
They are discrete as you move around town. There's no question about that.
Thank you, sir.
Not at all, sir. Thank you.
Makes more sense now. I don't know if I got it, but I can repeat it back to you. But I got it.
If I could have, say another, if I could have done it in one ordinance, I would have.
Got it. All right, makes sense.
All right, now I don't remember if I read this. Ordinance number 22-0-107? Is that what we're on?
We're on 106.
We approved 106, didn't we? 107. 107, we're on.
Target was 106.
Yeah, we did 106.
Oh, you're right, I'm on 107.
Yeah, ordinance number 22-0-107.
An ordinance declaring the improvement of certain real property located in the area of the Reynolds Road and Mentor Avenue Commercial Corridors in the city of Mentor to be a public purpose, declaring a portion of such property to be exempt from real property taxation, compensating the school district for revenue not realized, designating the public infrastructure improvements that will benefit such property, requiring annual service payments in lieu of taxes, establishing a municipal public improvement tax increment equivalent fund and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Filipek?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Malicek, please.
Thank you, Mr. Filipek. As Councilman Marn alluded to, there are several properties involved in this because it does involve both Reynolds Road and Mentor Avenue. The first is the self-storage that is just going to be south of the former Quaker Steak, Optima Dermatology, which opened earlier this fall, Rainforest Car Wash, which has just opened, the Starbucks that lies in front of the former Toys R' Us development, and the condado Sleep Number building on Mentor Avenue.
Thank you, Mr. Malicek. Council?
Move to suspend.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Krieger.
Yes.
Mr. Marn.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Donovan.
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling.
Yes.
Mr. Freeman.
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner.
Yes.
Ordinance number 22-0-108.
An ordinance declaring the improvement of certain real property located within the Newell Creek Development Area in the city of Mentor to be a public purpose, declaring a portion of such property to be exempt from real property taxation, compensating the school district for revenue not realized, designating the public infrastructure improvements that will benefit such property, requiring annual service payments in lieu of taxes, establishing a municipal public improvement tax increment equivalent fund, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Filipek?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Malicek?
Thank you, Mr. Filipek. This is for, again, the Newell Creek Development Area. This is primarily for the D'Chello Law Firm Professional Building that's nearly completed and is currently recruiting other tenants to go into it.
Thank you, Mr. Malicek. Council?
Move to suspend.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Krieger.
Yes.
Mr. Marn.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Donovan.
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling.
Yes.
Mr. Freeman.
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner.
Yes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Krieger.
Yes.
Mr. Marn.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Donovan.
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling.
An ordinance declaring the improvement of certain real property located in the Tyler Boulevard Industrial Corridor in the city of Mentor to be a public purpose, declaring a portion of such property to be exempt from real property taxation, compensating the school district for revenue not realized, designating the public infrastructure improvements that will benefit such property, requiring annual service payments in lieu of taxes, establishing a municipal public improvement tax increment equivalent fund and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Filipek?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Malachek?
Thank you, Mr. Filipek. These are properties locating along the Tyler Boulevard Industrial Corridor. Buyer's products with their extraordinarily large 200,000 square foot plus development that was completed this year. The Alliance Working Together building in front of Freedown and the Rise Mentor Complex on the western side of Tyler.
Thank you, Mr. Malachek. Counsel?
Move to suspend.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Ordinance number 22-0-109 is approved. Ordinance number 22-0-110.
An ordinance declaring the improvement of certain real property within the Diamond Center Heasley Road commercial area located in the city of Mentor to be a public purpose. Declaring a portion of such property to be exempt from real property taxation, compensating the school district for revenue not realized, designating the public infrastructure improvements that will benefit such property, requiring annual service payments in lieu of taxes, establishing a municipal public improvement tax increment equivalent fund and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Filipek?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Malachek?
Thank you, Mr. Filipek. This final TIF ordinance relates to both the newly constructed Jiffy Lube on Diamond Center Boulevard and then the being constructed Blue Falls Car Wash on Heasley.
Thank you, sir. Counsel?
Move to suspend.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes, move to approve.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Ordinance number 22-0-110 is approved. Ordinance number 22-0-111.
An ordinance approving the conversion of vacation leave accrued by the clerk of council into lump sum wage payment and declaring an emergency.
Counsel?
Mr. President, I would move to amend this ordinance to strike the number 224 hours and add the number of 353 hours.
A second. Julie, please call the roll. On the amendment?
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes, Mr. President, I would move to suspend as amended.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes, and finally, I would move to approve as amended.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Mr. President?
Mr. Marn?
I would like to let everybody know that I would be voting no on this because the reason being is this is not the way that we conduct business with the rest of City Hall. Ordinance number 22-0-095 deals with adopting employee handbook. If we had the employee handbook adopted and past council presidents and vice presidents utilized employee handbook, we would be following employee handbook. In that, it states how we, what we should and what we can and can't do. So since this has never been done before and this is okayed by a past council president that's no longer on council or even resides in the state, this has been brought forward to our attention and it's something that council has worked diligently with the last three months in order to come up with a solution. But as in the case of the handbook, that this would be utilized, that either the person uses a vacation and/or when that individual retires, that that vacation would be paid out. So I politely decline, no.
Thank you, Mr. Marn.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
No.
Mrs. Dowling?
I'm going to vote yes, but I just want to clarify, this is not a typical situation. Since 2016, City Council has always been a two-person office as far back as I can remember. I don't know if anyone can remember farther back, but it's always been a two-person office. Since May 2016, in the second desk in the office, five other people have sat in that desk, which has left our clerk in alert. And this has been going on for six years. And I also agreed to extend this back in 2017 because that's when it started. So I appreciate the sacrifice our clerk has made over these six years and the time. And I agree, it is an unusual circumstance. And I certainly hope going forward, we have a great assistant clerk now. I hope going forward that we will be able to get back on the straight and narrow and this should not happen again. So I will be voting yes. Thank you.
Mrs. Dowling?
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Was that to approval?
Yes.
Can't remember. Ordinance number 22-0-111 is approved. Ordinance number 22-0-112.
An ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a Mener Economic Development Grant with AWT Foundation.
Mr. Filipek?
Thank you, Mr. President. I think we're all excited to see the opening of the AWT Foundation's new building on Tyler Boulevard. And we're happy to be of some assistance to help them get started. Mr. Malachek?
Thank you, Mr. Filipek. The AWT Transformation Training Center has recently opened. I think all of you have been there. We also just had our business appreciation reception hosted there last month. The $3 million facility provide science, technology, engineering, and mathematics career programming for K to 12 students and apprenticeships. It will create two jobs in 2022, will add up to five new jobs by the end of 2025. Payroll is expected to be just over $100,000 for 2022, but almost $200,000 by the end of 2025. We have recommended an ED grant in the amount of $5,000.
Thank you, Mr. Malachek. Counsel?
Move to suspend.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes, move to approve.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Ordinance number 22-0-112 is approved. Ordinance number 22-0-113.
An ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a Mener Economic Development Grant with Nova Metal Products Incorporated.
Mr. Filipek?
Thank you, Mr. President. And we're very excited to see another aerospace company looking to land here in our community. Mr. Malachek?
Thank you, Mr. Filipek. Nova Metal Products will be relocating from another community locally to 750 Clover Avenue. They propose an investment of $1.2 million in the purchase of the building and building upgrades. Purchase was completed in September of 2022. Project will relocate 11 employees to Mentor and over the course of the grant create four additional jobs. We are recommending a one-time $10,000 ED grant for Nova Metal Products.
Thank you, Mr. Malachek. Counsel?
Move to suspend.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes, move to approve.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Ordinance number 22-0-113 is approved. Ordinance number 22-0-114.
An ordinance authorizing the city manager to award a bid contract to Huffman Equipment Rental, Inc. for the Mentor Lagoons Park Marina Bulkhead Replacement Project and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Filipek?
Thank you, Mr. President. And this is the fourth phase of our bulkhead replacement program. This will allow us to move forward with 456 lineal feet. And I'm happy to say that the bid actually came in about $100 lower than it did last year. So I don't, I'm not saying that inflation is improving. This-
By $100 it is.
This bid certainly has. And so we're happy to move forward with that. Ask for your approval.
Thank you, Mr. Filipek. Counsel?
Move to suspend.
Marn?
Quick question. All right, so now we're getting closer to the end of D. And our agreement with the Army Corps and where all the other powers would be is that we have to start on E if memory serves me correct, correct? And then work our way back north again?
We're not bound to any particular area necessarily. We really just evaluate, we started D because of the condition. So we are, the intention was to go from the worst sections forward. But E, I think, is our next intended target. And again, based on condition.
I guess what I'm leading up to, there's no movement on the rest of the marina where the T slips are at, which we refer to as T slips.
Not yet.
Do we have any inclination on when and how that could happen? Since it's already been like going on 10 years since we started this, you know, looking into this and redoing the walls?
Well, we had our conversation with the Army Corps probably three years ago is the start of that topic of conversation. And we have not received a permit, but we have not filed an active permit. And it's still in discussions because, again, we have several phases here before we'll actually get to that point. But yes, we're still working on that.
Okay, all right.
Mr. Marn, you got a second?
Go right ahead.
Oh, okay.
Anything else?
No, you have, do you have a second for the-
Oh, yes, second, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
The reason being is I'm definitely going to be asked when, especially when they cut the changing of the comma or Mentor Lagoon Jack Club is happening Saturday. So I have to have some type of answer. Thank you, I appreciate it. I have a second, yes, second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes, move to approve.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Ordinance number 22-0-114 is approved. Ordinance number 22-0-115.
An ordinance approving the lease and extinguishment of a storm sewer easement upon permanent parcel